Yeah, it's in the clubhouse.
The clubhouse area, yes ma'am. Ashley, can you see?
It's identified there.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, while we are not a public hearing, we do welcome comments and questions from the public. So if anyone would like to come up, please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vanessa Markarian. I live at 2403 Ivy Knoll Drive in Meven. I am the first house. If you look where the traffic circle is, as soon as you walk in and you see the Summer Walk sign, our, the Summer Haven sign, our house is right behind it. That's actually on the easement of our property. So we get to see all of the non-welcome traffic coming through our neighborhood and in that traffic circle already on a continuous basis. And that traffic circle is already seeing a significant impact from that unwelcome traffic. One of the things that I would like the board to consider and to take into consideration is the economical impact that this community is going to cause for the neighbors in the surrounding areas. Already, I just moved here in March of 2020 this year. And my children attend Garrett Elementary School. That school is at overcapacity. My son was in fifth grade, fourth grade, and in his class alone, there was over 33 students. So adding an additional 140 units to a population that is already struggling for schools and for traffic. And I know we discussed traffic and that there's going to be, it's not going to have a big impact. But for the residents on Summer Walk Drive particularly, they are going to have the biggest impact of this development being developed because there is only one way out for them. Because when you look at the traffic circle and you see Summer Walk Drive, the only way that they can get out, they can't turn right or they can't turn left to get out because there's that traffic circle. The only way they can go is right. And now they're running into a whole new community with over 140 units there. And even if we were just talking about one car per unit, that's 140 cars that's being added in. And realistically, you're going to be looking at at least, you know, two cars, maybe three. It really depends. I don't know what their, their rules or restrictions are going to be. But that's a significant amount of traffic and cars that's going to be added to a one-way, each-way highway of 119. In addition to that, speaking about the schools, you know, we were, this, this property was zoned for schools and I understand that they did back out. But the residents in the community could really stand to use another school in this area and/or a public park, like they were just discussing. Because we're on a, we're in an area where there's not a whole lot.
I didn't, I didn't alert you to the time. I didn't know she was going to put the time limit up for tonight. So finish your thoughts since I didn't tell you about you.
So yeah, I, I do appreciate the time and that's, that's my, that's my, um, two minutes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but I had three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah. Anyone else that would like to make a comment or has a question?
Good evening. My name's Glenn Levine. My wife and I live at 2034 Summer Walk Drive. We were one of the first residents in Summer Haven. Quality of life, quiet enjoyment. We moved here from a city that's got about 100,000 people in one square mile. There's no place to go to be alone with your thoughts, to look up at a big beautiful sky. There's no quiet space. There's no lone space. People move to Meven from places like that, from places like Durham, from Apex, because of the charming nature of Meven, because of the big open spaces, because of the, I love my neighbors, but the space I have between my neighbors. Every night I come home and I stare off my rear porch. And I'm in awe of the big open sky and the farmland off in the distance and at night, the lack of light pollution and the night sky and all the things that make Meven, Meven. 140 rental units, 140, well, really hundreds of transients are what are being offered here. People with no ties to Meven, people who are not going to build roots in Meven. People who aren't going to care about Meven because they're only here temporarily. And all that is going to come at the cost of people who have later down roots here. It is going to destroy our quiet enjoyment. Just learning where that mailbox kiosk is going to be. That circle that was built for 50 homes is going to be used. That's going to become the primary entrance to this community. My street is going to become a major thoroughfare into that community. The dog park is going to be 40 feet off my fence. That dog park is going to ruin the quiet enjoyment my dogs enjoy every day in their yard and all the other dogs on my block. Because all they're going to hear is the dogs in the dog park all day long. We are all for developing Meven. It's good for all of us. But in developing Meven, y'all should not lose sight of what makes Meven, Meven. You should not turn it into Durham. Because once that genie is out of the bottle, there is no going back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question. Are your neighbors actually here?
Uh, yes.
Calling for space. I don't know. I just heard that. That's good.
Anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Sartan. My husband and I reside at 2013 Summer Walk Drive. I just want to bring up something to consider that hasn't been mentioned yet. My husband and I saw a similar situation happen when we lived in Colorado. A property was rezoned for multifamily use and it put a great burden on the shopping, on the grocery stores, on the pharmacies, on the retail. And many of the residents had to go to the next town over, which then forced those residents to go to the next town over and over and it spreads and spreads and spreads. And the result is somewhat empty shelves, increased prices on goods because they are limited and competition for the same goods. So just wanted to make that very brief and bring it to attention because I haven't heard anyone else mention it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Alston. I live in 2008 Summer Walk Drive. We also moved here from a bigger city and we enjoy the private space. This development will bring increased noise and a lot more traffic. Currently, when I go to work, if there's school, I have to wait at least 20 minutes just to get from my house to Highway 40 or 85. I think there is no way that this will not increase that wait time. There are several schools on that road. There is Southeast Alaman's and there's also Hallfield. So this building will definitely increase traffic in that area. Also, child safety. The circle is where, we're the second house on Summer Walk Drive and that circle is where my kid gets dropped off. And now he would be facing constant traffic from cars going into the apartment complex. I feel like this is something that should definitely play a part. There's plenty of land available further down 119 in the other direction where there are not as many schools. And there's, it's not as crowded. Also, the buffering area would be directly behind my house and it would take away the quiet peace that we currently enjoy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Smith. I live on 2041 Summer Walk Drive. And excuse my appearance. I'm a registered nurse and I got off work and dress when I go.
You don't have a dress code.
So I just wanted to speak as, as I've gotten older, my husband's gotten older. I worry about crime. When we first moved here, we lived in apartment in Meven. And I hate to say it, but my husband's retired and he saw a lot of cops. He's retired. I'm not. I'm still working. And we lived in apartment in Meven because we hadn't yet sold our house in Virginia. And we came from a small town. And our, as our sons had graduated from college and they got jobs at the, what do you guys call it? I don't remember what they call it. I don't know. In down there. So we want to be close to the grandkids and we love Meven and the small community. And we really liked it. And we've noticed the change in Meven. It was growing just like any other towns that are growing. But we still like the charm and we like downtown Meven. But we also like the convenience, everything closed. Because where we came from, a small town in Virginia, we had to drive for shopping. So we do like a lot of the convenience. But we're also worried about crime. We lived in, like I said, we lived in the apartment in Meven. And my husband saw a lot of cops coming in and out. And as we've gotten older, we're worried about that crime. Because there's difference. We lived as, we're not young anymore and we've owned homes and as younger days, we rented and we saw our kids renting. And we were worried about people renting because there's a difference between owning and renting. And the difference is ownership versus renting. And the transits that come in and come out, that don't care and do care. So that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about, well, who's coming into our neighborhood? And am I going to be able to protect myself? And what's the response of the police? Because I did see the cops. He told me about cops. We felt like we were in a cop show on TV. And no joke, we did see it and we saw the cops coming in. And our daughter-in-law would call because she had that, I don't know, I don't know the app. It was that neighborhood app and she would, because she was worried about us. And she'd say, there's a call coming in on a vehicle break-in. And it was in our apartment complex. And I was working night, I was working a shift when I got off at night. I was working 12-hour shift. So she would be worried about me. And my husband would meet me out in the vehicle. And we smelled pot and we saw people selling drugs. And our neighbor, she was arrested because she left her child out. So we saw it. That was my, my concern. He didn't mention that. And that's my concern, along with everybody else saying about the traffic and the children. I wouldn't, I didn't have a problem with school. We need a school. I didn't have a problem. I don't have a problem with a park. We need a park. I love my grandchildren.
All right.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Daniela Alston. I'm actually the wife of Matthew who just spoke. I live at 2008 Summer Walk Drive. We are the second house on Summer Walk after the traffic circle. So this property will absolutely encroach on our backyard, buffer or not. So there will be noise. There will be dogs barking all day long. There'll be people driving in and out all day long, kids off a school bus. I also wanted to mention off of Persimmon Drive, there's a proposed 440 multifamily development going in. So not only do we have the 140 now, then there's going to be a 440 on that end. You know, 119 is a two-lane highway over there. Even your two turning lanes aren't going to help that. When I have to drop my son off at school, I have to turn left. Sometimes I have to wait 10 minutes I can, so I can make that left. So it will add a lot of people, a lot of cars. And our schools are currently being shorted 15 million for the next year. So if we're bringing the 140 units plus the 440, we are not going to be able to support these kids in our schools. Right? So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janet Echolbarger, 2872 Nearest Drive in Meven. My first question is this payment in lieu of $64,000, what is that payment in lieu for? Or of, I guess would be the right word.
It's permitted by our development ordinance and it allows developers to make a payment in, to the city in lieu of providing some of the public recreation space that is required by the development ordinance.
I see.
It's just another, another part of the development ordinance.
So that was really the question about the pond and the public recreation space. So they're not going to give what you guys really want, but instead they're just going to give you $64,000 and then do what they want. Is that correct?
Well, it is permitted by the UDO, so.
I understand. I understand. But I also hear this all the time on these developments. Everybody asks for a payment in lieu of doing something that they're supposed to be doing. And I don't think that's right. I don't think that the city should continue to take those and I think it's wrong. But anyhow, I am here to, to say that I would like to maintain this as R20. I was before you guys and the city council when Summer Haven was built. Summer Haven also wanted to be R8 and it was argued very strongly by all kinds of community members and they were only allowed to go to R12. And many of the people in this room bought those houses because there is space there for them. I have talked to many of them. They have looked at other places all over and they're like, no, these are great because there is breathing room between the houses. This is what human beings want. This is how they thrive. Okay? So maintaining the R20, which it is currently, is balancing development with quality of life and potential environmental considerations. Also, it safeguards the existing neighborhoods by keeping it R20. And safeguarding the existing neighborhoods is what zoning regulations are put in place to do. Willy-nilly deciding that we can just make this R8 and put in this huge development doesn't make any sense at all. We need to preserve the open space that the R20, current R20 zoning has there because it contributes to a more pleasant and environmentally friendly community. The decision to rezone this property is essentially about compatibility and this type of density is not compatible with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gilbert Walker. I live at 2042 Summer Walk Drive. I'm the last house on the, towards the end of the road and directly behind the dog park. So one of our concerns has to do with noise coming from that dog park. Dogs tend to have much better hearing and smell than humans do. So it's not a sight thing. They react to hearing other dogs and smelling other dogs. A lot of the dogs we have on our road communicate a lot. And so when you get them calm, it's a wonderful thing. And if we're going to hear dogs barking, it's going to set them all off again. So one of the things we're worried about, one of the reasons we moved here, is the peace and quiet and the ability to sit on your back deck or sit at your front porch and talk to neighbors and just hear sort of the wind and nature and no other sounds aside from some muted traffic from 119. And one of the fears we have along with the dog park is the traffic and seeing a lot of the vehicles coming in and out. I am the last house, so I don't really have a way of getting out of my house unless I go through the traffic circle. And with additional traffic coming through there, and yes, we do, we saw that they're going to put in a second entrance. The problem is that it's not the primary. And most folks are going to use the traffic circle, which means it's going to be a lot harder for me to get out in the morning, get back in the evening, run errands on the weekends, just a lot more folks coming in and out. I can also attest to being stuck at the end of Summer Walk Drive, trying to get into 119 either direction and having to sit for four, five, 10, 15 minutes, depending on the traffic. So that's a huge concern. The other piece I have is utilities. Are the utilities able to handle it? Before I moved here, I lived in Forsyth County in Georgia. One of the problems they ran into with lots of development and lots of apartment complexes, et cetera, was that the utilities, the water, the sewer, the roads weren't upgraded to handle the traffic. And what I'm seeing in a lot of the areas around here is that they're not, that's not being taken into account. And so my fear is in five, 10 years, you're going to have a crisis. And taxes will be raised to pay for it. Roads will get ripped up and everybody's quality of life goes down because the utilities weren't kept up. So that's a big concern for us as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Ben Saken. I live at 2203 Rosebank Way in Meven. I'm a part of the Summer Haven subdivision that's connected to this proposed apartment development. Our neighborhood community is against this rezoning request for the numerous negative impacts it would bring to the area. We also have an online petition from the larger Meven community with 400 people who have signed against this rezoning request. This land will be developed, so will the vacant land surrounding it. It's important to keep the current zoning because allowing this rezoning change to high-density zoning would open the door to more development like it, a longer road that's already strained. Increased density development in the, this area would negatively affect all the people of Meven who use these roads daily, especially the parents driving to and from these schools. This property sits along Highway 119, the two-lane stretch, with four ABSS schools just two miles on both sides of this property. During pickup and drop-off times, traffic backs up, track backs up both directions, blocking many intersections. I sit in it while dropping and picking up my son from the Hallfields daycare. It's terrible. It's unsafe. This problem will only get worse with the addition of Buc-Ee's and the Hallfields Landing Development right beside this property. That's going to have 458 units. As a parent, I'm very concerned about our children's safety in the neighborhood with a large amount of traffic funneled onto the roads from this proposed development right where our children wait for the school bus. I also feel for my neighbors who live right along this space for the decreased quality of life and lack of privacy this development would bring. I welcome new development that meets the current zoning of R20. This proposed development doesn't fit the area and the surrounding zones around it. Doesn't fit Meven's planning goals. Let's grow smart, not fast. This zoning request shouldn't be allowed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jacob Smith. I think I might be the only resident that doesn't live in Summer Walk. But my family does. So I reside at 608 South Fourth Street here in town. I've lived in Meven for the last 12, 13 years. We moved here in 2014. I think my stepmom was looking for Research Triangle Park was the, was the title she was looking for there. We relocated for work. My brother followed down soon after. And like many other transplants to North Carolina, we had an opportunity to pick where we wanted to live. And as someone who grew up in small-town America, Meven definitely hit home in a, in a way that was meaningful and, and a place that I wanted to raise my own family. I can say pretty objectively though, you know, I know what it's like to grow up in a town that is dying and not growing and not bringing in new business and, and new residents. That's very much the case of the town that I grew up in. It's exciting to live in an area that's growing. But I don't want to belabor all of the other points that were brought up that I think are really valid and I hope the board considers very carefully each and every one of those related to, to traffic and infrastructure and schooling. And, you know, I know capacities are across the board. They're, they're up and down. But 140 units versus 50, there's, there's something to be said about space and why people relocate here. And as someone who's lived in this community for a long time, you know, I, I do hope that we consider that growth very carefully. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, everyone. Okay. Why don't you come up to the microphone?
Madam Chairman, these first ones are for the city staff. Just to understand, there's been mentioned and, and this lot was originally zoned or intended for a school. But I gather the residential, the R20 zoning was what fit for a school? I mean, that's what a school could locate there with?
The school was allowed by a special use permit. So it is permitted in the R20 zoning with that.
With a special use permit. Okay, very good. Then I wanted to be sure I understood that somebody described it, the Persimmon Street or Lane, whatever it is, that comes into 119 will have a stoplight.
Correct.
And will go across to Kimery Road. Is that the straight, the quote, "straight-through" connection? And then 119, left or right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And last question is how, how wide are the streets in this subdivision in the apartment?
They are not streets. It is a parking lot. So we require a minimum aisle width of 26 feet. And I believe they're exceeding that in a few areas, but that would be the minimum.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things to lift up. And I appreciate the last speaker's comments about we want Meven to be thoughtful about its development. Your staff has recommended the approval of this. But I think one of the reasons the staff is recommending this is the, Meven needs all types of, all types of housing. And this is another type of housing in addition to single-family that is to the south. There's townhouses to the right. There's actually not multifamily in Hallfields. It's just townhouses and single-family. And, and I want to, I want to, I also want the planning board to be thoughtful about what we're, what we're asking for here. This is a two-story, low-impact, entry-level option for folks moving to Meven. And we think, given Brown's history with development in other communities and this community, this is something this community can be, will be very proud of if it's approved. Let me talk about the schools for a minute because we had that same concern. We had, that was lifted up in a couple of the neighborhood meetings that we had. We have talked to the school system and Garrett Elementary School right now is at 70% capacity. Hallfields Middle School is at 83% capacity and Southeast High School is at 85% capacity. So while there is growing capacity, there's growing need, those schools are not at capacity. Traffic is always a concern and I understand the neighbors' concerns about that. But that's why we've hired a traffic engineer who's here to answer questions. We think the traffic, based on, don't, don't trust me, trust, listen to our traffic engineer, the traffic is going to work, particularly with the addition of the second entrance on, on Persimmon. Buffer is important. We want the buffer there too. And your UDO is very specific and demanding about that buffer. And if, if, if we don't build it right, your staff's going to let us know that. So that buffer is going to work. We, we have a lot of confidence that at 40 feet, that's in the buffer. In addition to the additional feet, we've measured it about 250 feet to the east. It's closer on the west. No doubt it's closer on the west. But on the, on the, on the east side, it's about 250 feet. Now, last thing I want to close with is when this development is completely built out, remember the residents of Hallfields will be able to access Feral Road, right? You can, you'll be able to go to the east from this development to the north. And so I, I know there might be some strain initially, but when it's completed, there'll be access to the east. So unless there's any other questions, we'd ask the planning board to consider this and ultimately.
Yep, let me get started.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone, for your presentations and your questions. They've been really insightful. The dog park definitely seems to be a point of conversation. Why a dog park and not a playground? Because of cost, I expect. And then also, is the dog park, is that a lighted area? Is there lighting around that, or is it a dawn-to-dusk?
I would guess dawn-to-dusk, Chester. I don't think it's a cost-savings item. I think it's an amenity demand. I think folks want dog parks. People that live in these facilities want dog parks. And that's what Mr. Brown's research is telling them about. What, who wants to live in a facility like this? They're gonna want a place to walk their dog.
And then in the exit point off, out of the circle.
Yes, ma'am.
Location, there's not gonna be a stoplight there. Is there any option of making that a no-left turn at certain times of day? Because I did hear that one resident saying she sits there for 10 minutes to turn left. And we all hear enough about this section of 119 to know that it is a big traffic clog, so.
Can I ask you, are you, are you, oh, gosh, all right, let me get back to that. Let me make sure I understand your question.
Where, right, so at the bottom.
Is there an option for a no-left turn here?
At certain times of the day.
I think that's an NC DOT question. And remember, these are public roads. The circle is a public road. Obviously, 119 is a public road. But we could certainly ask NC DOT if they would consider and, and I guess you're asking that because if you can't turn left and can only turn right.
Yeah, and then I'm also thinking about, now you've got school buses coming in to pick up kids, but now they are gonna sit there for 10 minutes before they can turn left to get out, unless they're going through that neighborhood, which is now not streets, it's a parking lot. Which I didn't quite realize that in thinking about it as an apartment complex, they're not streets.
Yeah.
So is it now just gonna be a random cut-through of, I'm just gonna cut through all this to get up to Persimmon so I can come out of the stoplight?
Yeah. John, you want to come and address the question of the cut-through? It's an interesting one, and I think John's got a lot of experience in kind of addressing.
That's what I would do.
I'll just add that Hallfield Landing subdivision connects via a public street to the existing Summer Haven subdivision. So there will be a public street connection to access the traffic signal that would be at Persimmon, not only this private area.
Let me see if I can show that on a different.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we have a bigger map that shows that?
I don't know if I do, Ashley. It's to the south of where this site, where this map is. All right, yeah, I don't, I don't know if Ashley, if you can pull that up.
Is it Summers Avenue that then comes out to Persimmon?
Summer Walk Drive will connect to Persimmon Place.
It's a dead end now, Summer Walk dead ends, but it will eventually connect into Persimmon. And Ashley, I don't know if you've got a... Yeah. Right here, Summer Walk will terminate right there, and then this is Persimmon, what you see here.
Well, not exactly.
Well, it's, I'm sorry, yeah, it's a little to the right of that, right? So they'll be, you know, these residents will be able to go to Persimmon, drive up to get to this light.
And the light is contingent to, or the building is contingent to the light, like are they?
Yes, ma'am. And also the improvements on 119. That left over and that right over, that I'm jumping around now.
No, this is helpful, thank you.
Well, hold on, gosh, I've really done it here. These, these improvements right here, no CO will be issued to our client until those improvements are done. Other questions?
Was there any discussion of moving the dog park up to the front of the development to, so that it's not backing up against the existing neighborhood? I live near a dog park, and I know the noise that comes from those. And so I definitely understand their concerns about having the dog park right there, not just from the sound of the dog park, but also the disturbance of the existing pets that live in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you've got the space around the pond, so.
There weren't any specific conversations about that, but I think Mr. Brown would consider any changes that would enhance the development. It's just, remember, our zoning.
I think that could be some goodwill with the neighbors.
And frankly, we were working so hard on this connection. This took a lot of lifting to get this connection, and we really focused our efforts on that.
And with saying that these are parked, this is a parking lot and not roads, is there designated guest parking?
Yes, thank you for asking that. Actually, we've overparked this. Your UDO requires a certain number of parking spaces, right? But we've, for that very reason, because of guests, we've created, I think, how much more parking, Chester? I think it's about 10 or 15% more parking than that's required by the UDO.
And is, can you go to that rendering of the buildings? So we can seek, you know, kind of what that looks like? Or is it a traditional parking lot with parking spaces in front of the units as well as the garages?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yeah, yes, ma'am. I guess, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around on here, the picture that looks like.
Like this.
This. I mean, you can see, like, the on-street part, or the turn-in part.
These have more on-street parking and not really a parking lot, but.
But there would be parking within the site. That's in addition to what's required of this number of units.
Okay. Will there be curbs and sidewalks?
You want to talk?
Yeah.
Be happy to address the question about the parking, Chester Brown, Brown Investment Properties.
Okay.
The development ordinance requires... Where is it? Here. 231 spaces required by the ordinance. We're providing 362.
Including the garages?
Yes.
Okay. Will there be speed control measures in that parking lot? Speed bumps or?
I don't think any are planned. John, do you want to speak to the cut-through question, or, I mean, John can come up and...
I don't think he wants to.
Well, no, I don't know what the question is.
Well, I think the question, yeah, she has, the question is this, do you think this will be used as a cut-through, given what you know about the infrastructure?
It'd be very circuitous to try to weed through all those parking lots.
Introduce yourself.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Davenport. I'm the owner of Davenport Engineering, and our firm did conduct the traffic impact study for this area. Address is 119 Brookstown Avenue, Winston-Salem. And I am a licensed professional engineer, and they like to put me on the spot, of course. So, I mean, obviously, traffic is like water. When you think about how people try to find the easiest way. The question is, is it the easiest way to cut through a neighborhood and go through all those different turns to get to the traffic signal or just wait? But it depends on how long the wait is and how irritated you are and how, you know, there's just all kinds of variables. Do I think that's a regular cut-through? No, I don't. But would there be someone that might think that they would do that because they think it's better? I see people do all kinds of strange things when it comes down to cut-through traffic. There's a traffic signal over where we live, and the road's under construction, so the DOT's putting in fixed time. I don't know if you know. So it doesn't change when you drive up, it changes when it gets ready. My wife has figured out it takes three minutes if you get there when it's red to get through it. And so what people will do is very weird things. They'll make a right turn, go through somebody's parking lot, and then make a left so they can keep going and not run the light illegally. So would that happen here? Potentially. But I don't see this being a big cut-through. Like, if you sat there and routed GPS, it's not gonna tell you to turn right, turn left, and route through all that. So I hope that gives you the best answer I can give you, not having a crystal ball, but I do not see this as a major cut-through.
And my last question, which I think goes back, is this is not a neighborhood with sidewalks and curbs? Because it's a parking lot.
This parking lot does have curb and gutter that is required by our ordinance.
Thank you.
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks. Thank you.
Good job being on the spot there.
Any other questions?
Just for our discussion?
I think so.
I have one question, Madam Chair. My question is directed to staff. Is there any feedback, other than the TRC, with the fire department? As far as getting in there or if an emergency happens? So is there any feedback from the fire department, from the fire chief is my concern?
Our fire chief and fire marshal do participate in our technical review committee, so they've looked at this plan as many times as it's come through on the agenda and probably beyond that. And the buildings are sprinkled, so they don't have any concern in terms of access or the ability to fight a fire if that occurs.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I mean, hey, it's my last meeting, guys. So I guess I can speak freely and say what I want, right?
Within reason.
Nothing to lose. No, seriously, I mean, my comments, my votes have always been based on what's best for the city and within our guidelines and regulations and plans. I think you all know that. I'll spare my pleas, I know we have one council person here. I will spare my pleas for a study to review. How many apartments in our housing stock would be appropriate? Do you like the way I spared you of that? I did have to mention it. We can do a 10-month study on staffing, but we can't do a four-month study on apartments. I don't quite get that. I retired a Bedlam. I hear a lot of cons. I do not hear a lot of pros. I hear a lot of negative impacts. I also do not think that this fits in with this surrounding area. I don't. It's not compatible. It's a great point that you brought up, the history of the rezoning process, to remind us of what we went through way back then, when they wanted R-8 back in the day. And we in the city council said, no, we went to R-12. We did something different. And I think that was a wonderful point to bring that up. The quality of life arguments, spot on. I think it's, they're valid, in my opinion. And we do have housing stock of all kinds here in the city. And I'd argue we have probably a higher proportion of apartments than we need. Again, study. I don't think this, you know, moving the dog park is going to make this development palatable. I don't really think that matters. Look, this is a high-impact development. And we're looking at nine and a half units per acre. And in an area that's right adjacent to a subdivision where people bought in wanting a good quality of life. I think we're gonna have concerns with traffic, we're gonna have concerns with noise, we're gonna have, we are gonna have concerns with crime, we're gonna have calls, we're gonna have stresses on our police and fire. That happens. Look, I've always said I'm not against apartments, per se. But we gotta have them in the right locations and in the right proportion. That's just what we have to have as a city. And I think we're sometimes getting one, we're not getting the other. You know, it's just, it doesn't fit. It's just high-impact. We need to scrutinize these developments very seriously. If we're gonna add these, we need to make sure they fit, they're in the right place, they're not gonna have all these impacts, especially on these developments that are next door. We had that problem behind Walmart. What did we do? The council decided to knock off connectivity so they'd allow that one to go in. I don't believe, I don't understand that either, but it happened. Look, I'm against it. I'm voting against it. It's the bottom line.
Any other comments from the board? Ready for a motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny the R-8 CD rezoning as presented due to lack of harmony with the surrounding zoning or land use. And it is not with the consistency of the objectives and goals of our 2017 land development plan.
I will second that.
And we've got a second. All in favor of Susan's motion to deny the rezoning request, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. We will, this will still come to council on July 7th, so. All right, thank you to everyone that came out to speak.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item of... Yes. The next item on the agenda is the request to rezone six properties totaling plus or minus 37.68 acres located along Meven Oaks Road and Old Hillsborough Road from R-20 and B2 to R-8 and B2 for a development consisting of seven commercial parcels and 128 townhomes by Deep River Partners.
Okay, so this is a request by Deep River Partners. This property is about 37.68 acres. The existing zoning is currently R-20 and B2 CD and R-8 CD. If you remember, this was, the B2 CD and R-8 CD was from a previous rezoning. The request of rezoning is for, to continue the R-8 CD and the B2 CD. So this property is located in Meven's extraterritorial jurisdiction in Alamance County, and annexation is required before connection to city utilities. This property is for a single-family residential, enforc'd and vacant. Four of the properties were approved in October 2023 for commercial and townhome development. And they are adding two more of the single-family properties to that originally rezoned property. The surrounding uses include the Meven Fire Station, Station 3, the Evolved Development. You have two churches. And then you have some commercial, you have signature flooring, which will be, and alpaca chicken, which is gonna be right next door. And then there's single-family residential, the Meadows Development. This property is in the G2 secondary growth area, Jones Drive in South Meven Oaks Residential Growth Area. It is in a conservation area. And this property is also gonna be part of the Meven Oaks Road Small Area Plan. So this is to include the development of part of this road extension of Wilson Road to eventually connect to the light here, going into Meven Oaks Road right there. So this new plan is gonna include seven commercial parcels at the front of the property. It's gonna have the Wilson Road extension dividing the commercial from the townhomes, which is gonna be 128 townhomes. They are having to do a five-foot sidewalk along Meven Oaks Road, and then also a 10-foot multi-use path along Old Hillsborough Road. There are gonna be public and private streets part of this development. So there's the one public street that'll connect to Wilson, and then the rest of the development will be private streets. There will be private amenities for the townhome development, which include a picnic area, playground, a fenced dog park, and a mulched walking trail. So there are a few condition requests that they are making. So for dimensional standards, they are asking for a minimum of 30-foot building separation between the townhome buildings with no side yards. A front setback of 25 feet measured from the back of the curb, and then 20 feet side street setback for townhomes adjacent to Wilson Road. They are also asking for alternative landscaping plans. So some of the buffers have been reduced. There's gonna be approximately 2.19 acres of private recreation. And then they do... And then they do request to consider townhome backyards to reach the required 2.94 acres. And then they're also going to be providing a payment in lieu of public recreation area to be used for off-site pedestrian improvements. And then the commercial lots will be developed with a driveway access from Wilson Road and cross-access between the lots. And then a restriction of some of the B2 permitted uses. This plan also has several traffic improvements that they have to do. So the first one is going to be on the Meven Oaks and future Evolve intersection, which is going to be this intersection here. There's going to be a full movement fourth leg to the previously approved signalized access to the Evolve Development. There's going to be a southbound exclusive left turn lane, a northbound exclusive right turn lane, and they are to construct a connected and coordinated traffic signal with emergency vehicle preemption and pedestrian phasing. And then for the Site 2 access, which is going to be this access right here. NCDOT actually presented them with two alternatives. The applicant does show right-in-only access at that location and then northbound exclusive right turn lane. And then the last access point onto Old Hillsborough Road. So that's right here. They're going to have an eastbound exclusive left turn lane on to that road. If you have no questions for me, I'll turn it over.
Could we get a clarification, though? What is the primary difference between the original zoning and the proposed zoning? Is it the same number of lots? Is it the same number of acreage?
They purchased two addition, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. They purchased two additional lots, so they're making a larger project with these two additional lots. And staff may be able to speak more directly to that, but...
The original approval... The original approval was for five commercial lots and 90 townhome units. This proposal is for seven commercial lots and 128 townhome units. I believe the applicant has the acreage in their sign. I believe the applicant has that coming up, Tom.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney with a tuckledug and small firm in Greensboro at 400 Bellmead Street, Suite 800, here with Nathan and Caitlin, as indicated earlier. And also, my, our client on this project are here represented by Steen Spove and Brian Pierce back here. And we also have John Davenport and Deion Brown with us tonight as well, in case you have any traffic questions. I'm going to go ahead and warn you that I'm going to be, I'm going to be brief unless you have questions. I want to be thorough, but the moral of the story here is this is sort of more of the same. Had we had the opportunity to purchase these two lots back when we were before you in 2023, you would have seen this same project. To answer Mr. Boni's question, it's the same uses, you know, townhomes and commercial lots on the front. And we just, since we've had the opportunity to acquire these two additional lots, we've been able to make this plan a little bit, a little bigger, and in our opinion, a much better plan for reasons I'll explain in just a minute. To get to the details here, since it does include the whole thing, instead of just coming in and rezoning, you know, the part we added, we've rezoned the entire part again or the entire project because it makes sense to do it all together. And you can see the uses have not changed. And it's roughly 10 acres have been added to development, increasing it from roughly 28 to 37. And there's an additional 38 townhome units and two more commercial parcels. As Ashley indicated, that is an increase of the commercial parcels from five to seven and an increase from the townhomes from 90 to 128. So that's what you see in those two different versions of the, what's already been approved and then what we're asking to be approved tonight. Really, one of the most significant benefits that we think adding these two lots and the additional parts of this project bring is really the ability to access that signalized intersection there on Meven Oaks Road. We really think that's going to make the whole, not only our project move better, but also the whole Meven Oaks quarter, which is, you know, even with the DOT improvement still suffers at times. And so now we'll be able to have a full movement access there, and we're being required to make some improvements there, which staff explained in great detail. And the previously, the only access we had on Meven Oaks Road was a full movement access, which would not have been, it would have been necessary to make the development work, but it wasn't ideal from a traffic situation. And so now that access has been converted from a full movement access to a right-in-only. So essentially, if you're going north on Meven Oaks Road, you'll be able to, you know, cut in there instead of waiting and going up to the light, which Davenport and the NCDOT feel will improve, you know, the traffic on Meven Oaks Road. And then you'll have the full movement there as well as the improvements on Hillsborough Road as well. We feel like that this is certainly consistent with the comprehensive land use plan as this board and the council found with the previous approvals. It furthers the goals of your 2024 bicycle and pedestrian use plan with the multi-use path along Old Hillsborough Road frontage. I'm probably missed, yeah, I'm not even talking through my slides here. So this is the Meven by Design, which you're well familiar with, and those are the highlights of why we think this is not only complimentary to it, but complies with it fully. And then the 2024 Bicycle and Pedestrian Transportation Plan. We've got the multi-use path there on Old Hillsborough Road, which we feel, you know, is important, an important priority for Meven and was brought up during the public engagement process of your, of the 2024 plan as well as being something that's desired and needed. Then here's some more detail on the site plan, and your staff has gone through this very thoroughly. But another benefit is you get Wilson Road, you get a little closer to having a whole Wilson Road, which will be important to that relieving some congestion on Meven Oaks Road. You probably know that there's probably one impediment left there, and folks are trying to work on that, but there's only so much you can do. But this does get you a little closer and, no, it is important that there's no access to any of the commercial or the residential directly on the Meven Oaks Road. So you're not putting traffic, you're not having six or seven or, you know, curb cuts there on Meven Oaks Road. You're, you've got two access points and that's it. And all the access to those commercial lots are either cross-access from lot to lot or on Wilson Road as well. So we feel like that that is a really significant transportation improvement there. And then this is just a highlight of some of, you know, what we feel are the development design considerations that make this beneficial. You've got your commercial, we feel like this is appropriate. You've got your commercial development up on Meven Oaks Road. You've got your residential behind it, and then that serves as an additional buffer to the residential even further behind across the stream there. Extends Wilson Road, encourages walkability and access to neighborhood-scale retail and commercial businesses. I can't tell you, you know, how many times we've been asked by folks about this project, hey, what kind of restaurants you're going to have there? What kind of shops you're going to have there? Folks are excited about getting some more shopping and eating opportunities in that area. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We had one neighbor attend and was mostly just curious, you know, about what was changing. It was one of our closest neighbors. And once we explained, it was a lady who lived on Old Hillsborough there, kind of across the creek from us. And once we explained what we were doing and where we were going, she was very supportive and indicated that one step closer to having Wilson Road would be a really good thing. So, but it was a very positive conversation there. And then we do feel like that, you know, this particular mix of uses here is great housing for workforce and young families. It provides, you know, an entryway into Meven, which is a great community, as you've heard a lot tonight, where a lot of people want to live. And so this is a product that I think is, we think has been missing in your community is the opportunity to live in a product like this and, you know, maybe decide, you know, where you want to live in Meven while you're figuring out what Meven is all about and what the different neighborhoods are. Also, there's some assistance with flood prevention, stream preservation, and wildlife management that you probably recall hearing about last time. There's some mischievous beavers down in that creek that we're on the lookout for. And so we will continue to keep our eyes open and our focus on that as well. And then the private recreation amenities, including the playground, dog park, and picnic area. One of the exceptions that, you know, we have asked for is to be allowed to use the backyard area as private recreation space, which we've had, I know, the council and y'all have had a lot of discussions about before, and that was allowed previously in this, in this development as well. And is certainly appropriate, given the way that it's set up. There's not really much difference in how people view that backyard, except legally. It is common area as opposed to somebody owning it individually. This is really, these are the same designs that you saw previously. Not much has changed there, and we feel like it'll be a great-looking product and will be very attractive to folks, and they won't have any trouble filling them up pretty quickly. And then this is just representative of the commercial development. Don't pay any attention to any of the names, and these, these are just, these are names that...
Yeah, it's the first thing we like that.
These are names that our client work with, works with regularly, but by no means has anything been signed. As you know, usually tenants don't commit to somewhere until you have your zoning in place. But they are, they do have an immense amount of interest in these sites, so know that. And they've been working with several potential tenants who would be great additions to the Meven Oaks area. And then I talked a little bit about our community meeting, and we discussed all the changes there. And we'll continue to, through the course of, assuming this gets approved through the course of development, we'll continue communicating with our neighbors anytime they have any questions. Glad to do that. And then that wraps it up, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board right now? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say again, while we are not a public hearing, we do welcome public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have a question, make a comment or have, has a question? Okay. Anything else from the board, or do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the R8 CD and B2 CD zoning as presented. The motion to find that the application is consistent with the objectives and goals in the city's 2017 Comprehensive Land Development Plan, Meven by Design. Specifically, the request is for properties within the city's G4 Secondary Growth Area and G2 Jones Drive and South Meven Oaks Road Residential Growth Area, and proposes a mix of residential and light commercial uses. Encourages a variety of uses and growth strategy areas and supports compact and walkable environments consistent with growth management goal. Allows for more commercial development to be pedestrian-friendly, supporting walking between different land uses consistent with growth management goal. Improves safety and pedestrian access across major streets such as Meven Oaks Road consistent with public facilities and infrastructure goal.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Were there any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. This will also be at city council on July 7th.
All right. We do have a few minor announcements from staff. There was a change in the city council meeting schedule, so provided we have applications for our December meeting, that date has changed to the 15th. And after this meeting, we'll send out that adjusted calendar, since we do have a number of absences tonight, to make sure there are no conflicts, and we can discuss it at the next meeting if necessary. City offices are closed Thursday, June 19th, and Friday, July 4th, in observance of holidays. And Mr. Chapman has some news he wishes to share.
I just want to make the board aware that a longtime planning board member, Thomas O. Vincent, passed away last week.
Oh.
And he was funeralized today at the Meven Presbyterian Church. He leaves behind a legacy of faith and service and love for family and for the Meven community. He was 91 years old, and he served this planning board for 14 years.
Yes, he was a great planning board member.
Rest in peace.
Yes, rest in peace.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that information. All right. Anything else from the board? Okay.
Well, just before I leave, I mean, this is my last meeting, and I just want to say thank you for everyone, for, I've been really enjoyed being on the board for so many years. I'm thankful for the opportunity. I think it's just really been great. I've enjoyed working along beside all of you and other people that have come and gone. And thank you for letting us know about Mr. Vincent. That's awesome. You know, reflecting back, you know, you think of all the things we've gone through. We, I think the city leaders have done a lot of good things, and I think that we've done a lot of things that we could improve upon, quite honestly. You know, we hear all the time, so often, from Ebonites, you know, slow down our growth, slow down our growth. You know, I hear all the frustration, you know, all the things that's going on. I know you all hear it too. They call me, they ask me, they stop me on the street, you know, what can we do about this? Well, the first thing I tell them is I don't make the decision. I'm sure you say the same thing. We just advise. So, you know, I do think, though, that we can slow our growth and still stay within our guidelines and plans. I think it's, we can do it. You know, we've gotten into this growth cycle that's really hard to get out of. You know, it's just this churning. It just keeps feeding on itself. You need more infrastructure, then you need more money, you need more staff, you need fire trucks, police, fire station, water treatment plants. We're doing that now. And then it starts over again because you need to work with the development to pay for the infrastructure. It's just, it's hard to get out of. And then we're getting asked a lot of, you know, big developments. I'll just say, just continue to do the best thing you can for the city, trying to balance it all, you know? One thing I've said many times over the years is I just really hate it always to hear from previous, you know, leaders, you know, we're going to grow whether you like it or not. I could not stand hearing that because it's just so defeated. And we understand we're going to grow, but we need to grow appropriately, and we can do things to, to make that happen. And so I just would really wish people would stop saying that. We're going to grow. Yeah, we understand it, but we have a lot of control over that. We, this is our city. This is where we live and we work and play, and we need to keep it nice. And, you know, we can do these things. Don't ever feel like you don't have a say-so and we can control that. And so I just, we can control it. We can make it good and the best we can. You know, bottom line, I appreciate the opportunity. I really enjoyed it, but I just now, considering the advisory-type role this is, I need to find another avenue to maybe serve and maybe look after the current citizens. That's really what I'm looking at right now, but I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Kurt, thank you dearly for that because you've always had an eye for the quality of life of the citizens, which I do myself. I've lived here for 60 years, and I've seen the change. And I too am concerned with space to breathe, but I'm also concerned with the growth. And as you said, it can be dealt with in a diplomatic way. But thank you so much. Thank you for always being transparent. I'm going to miss you.
Oh, I appreciate it. I'll miss you.
But you're still here, you're not moving.
You're going to hear me probably behind that.
Thank you for that.
And maybe other roles, hopefully, to see how that works out. But I thank you for your kind words. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Kurt. Just thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.